Biloxi City Council meeting for October the 3rd. We'll start with prayer with Councilman Felix Gons.
I need a motion to amend the agenda. Have a first and a second discussion. All in favor?
To the consent agenda, we're adding item 5YY, resolution to appoint Dixie Newman as vice president.
Motion?
As amended.
Okay, I have a first by Mr. Lawrence, second by Mr. Glavin. All in favor? Seven zero. We'll now move to the presentation agenda.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Want to welcome everybody to our cruising meeting, right? Tomorrow's a big day, the week's a big day, great day. A lot of things happening, Chiefs are gonna do this little report after a while. But this is, we've had a few events in September, like the recent president of Croatia visiting here, and I think it's been very exciting the last several weeks about where we're going as a city. First of all, I'd like to ask Jason Earl to come help me present a certificate to the certificate of appreciation to Home Depot. You want to do this presentation first or what?
Real quick, if Home Depot employees come up, you can look at the screen. Home Depot has become a partner with Biloxi. You know, one of the things Mayor Fofo made it very clear that we are Biloxi, and Home Depot took this very seriously. So, we had a fire station whose kitchen was in bad shape, that's been used over the years. You can see that it was pretty aged, and, you know, but Home Depot came in, not only did they come in with help, but also they came in with funding, to assist us with funding. As you see in the next slide, you know, the firefighters started gutting out their station, but then Home Depot came in, in the next slide, as they gut it, you can see, now the firefighters do clean up, but you can see Home Depot, they came in and started working. Some of these faces you will see in the picture, but also here is the relationship and friendship that we have, partnership we have. But they came in and started remodeling the whole kitchen, took out the old cabinets and put in the new cabinets. We had some break time, some fellowship time, but they worked really hard to show proof that they are not only in the city, but also a partner with the city. And they was in there painting, and look at the end results, as you see, it goes through. They got a chance to tour the station, see the fire trucks, but then the firefighters was happy about the new cabinets, new sink, new refrigerators for each shift. Home Depot, the foundation donated all of this, and they worked really hard to give us a new kitchen right there on Veterans Boulevard. Old station, but a new kitchen. So, Mayor Fofo, I just want you to actually recognize our friends.
Very good. By the authority vested in me, by the people of the city of Biloxi, Home Depot store number 2910 is hereby awarded this certificate of appreciation and recognition for the donations and volunteers in the kitchen renovations, Biloxi Fire Station number four. Congratulations. You want to say that? Take a picture real quick. Thank you. I think we have another presentation. Sally Graham, would you come up here regarding the information on SBA?
Thank you so much, Mayor. Hi, thank you very much, Mayor Gillich, for allowing me to speak at the Biloxi City Council. I am Sally Graham, and I'm from the SBA Office of Disaster Recovery and Resilience, and I am deployed here to help with the disasters that took place in Jackson and neighboring Jackson and Jasper Counties. We've awarded $3 million to disaster survivors in those counties for physical damage. Under the same SBA disaster declaration, Harrison County is a declared county, and that's because SBA provides economic injury disaster loans to small businesses and private nonprofits in all of the contiguous counties. So, I'm here to share with you that information, so the city of Biloxi and the Biloxi City Council can provide that information to your constituents. There are incentives with the economic injury disaster loan, there's no physical damage that's required, it's for working capital, so for bills that the business or nonprofit would have normally been able to pay had the disaster not taken place. The deadline is not until May 13th, 2024, because sometimes businesses and nonprofits don't see a loss of revenue for several months down the road, and there are ways to apply. You can visit us at the Business Recovery Center, where we're set up at Moss Point City Hall, until October 11th, or you can call and ask for a paper application, or the most efficient way to apply is online. And that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And my last item would be, please spread to the minutes, the expenses from the Biloxi Travel Credit Card. Chief, she's gonna come up doing the mayor's, doing the departmental reports. So, that concludes my report. Chief?
Thanks, thanks for indulging me for a few minutes. Chris is gonna hand out exactly what I, the notes that I have here. I don't want to read all this verbatim, but I am gonna go over a good bit of it. And this pertains to special events and just some of the issues that we have. This is gonna be coming up in the future, and so I just wanted you to have this ahead of time. So, as ever, it's probably not a surprise to anyone to know that the city of Biloxi is the epicenter for most major events along the coast. The large events require that every Biloxi police officer be on duty. The city also hires additional officers from around the state, generally depending on the event, 12 to 15 out-of-town officers. Since the spring break shooting, we've found it very difficult to recruit out-of-town officers to come down and work, mostly out of safety concerns, either by the officer himself or by his department. They have to have permission from the department to come down. So, for cruising the coast, we were only able to bring in five additional officers, and usually cruising the coast would be one of those events where 15 officers would be jumping to come down or more. We usually have to say no to some, but that is, that is not, that is not happening now with events. Some events are certainly more desirable than others, less dangerous, and considered family entertainment. However, all the events come, all the events come with a huge amount of planning and logistical issues that we deal with. In addition to the major events, and I have, I've said this before, but it's, when I sat down and looked at it, it was even more events than I thought it was. In addition to those major events, there's approximately 80 to 100 smaller events each year. Often, there are two to four of those events in a single weekend, and each event requires two to six officers to be present, and the only way to accomplish that is to bring officers in on their days off. The overtime would not be an issue if it was on occasion, however, this is, this is nearly every weekend. This increased workload is a regular source of stress and low morale, causes family issues, creates a negative contribution to officer retention, and makes recruitment much harder. And we have been told that by people that we've tried to recruit. And here's something that, until we sat down and looked at it, I didn't realize myself, but in a single year, the average Biloxi police officer will be forced to work 50% of their weekends off, 50% of their weekends off. That 50% only includes weekends and does not reflect days during the week that the officers may be called to work while off-duty. It does not account for hours while on-duty that officers must spend in court and training. The problem is further complicated, because there's a small window between events when officers are allowed to take vacation. This leads to daily shift shortages, when several officers are forced to take vacations at the same time, and that has to be between events. Over the past three years, during exit interviews of 29 resigning officers, the majority listed a number of city events, and the forced overtime is the main reason they were leaving. Those 29 officers are not reflective of officers who have retired, or those officers who are currently looking for employment elsewhere due to the overbearing workload caused by the various events. The city has attempted to remedy the problem by hiring more officers. However, recruitment and police service, it's, even though it's improving, it's still very difficult, and we hope in the future that we'll see more officers, more, more young people coming into this business, but it's just not happening right now. But there has been an improvement over the last six months. In the last three years, has shown a marked increase in officer involvement during departmental-sponsored events, such as award ceremonies, events for employees, and just general get-togethers. We also, we've also seen a huge decrease in officer participation in the community and local events, like 5K runs, any kind of volunteer opportunity and other activities that support the city and its citizens. Most certainly, this is due to the workload. Three years ago, if we asked for volunteers for something, it would be many, many that would come out and volunteer to help, but we don't, we don't really get that now, and I can't, I can't blame them. If they're here, 50% of their weekends off, if they're already here, they're forced here, it's very difficult. They need to spend time with their families. So, I don't take that personally at all, that they're not volunteering, that they're not coming to community events anymore, I understand it. Currently, there are a few city ordinances that regulate events within the city of Biloxi. The few ordinances that are in place have been significantly, significantly, have not been significantly updated for many years. When these ordinances were crafted, the city of Biloxi was host to only a handful of events yearly, with Mardi Gras being the most prominent event. There was little need for extensive event control or oversight and planning processes, where simple, with most events lasting, you know, two to three days a few times a year. Liability regarding city, the city's role during planned events was minimal at that time. Presently, within the courts, municipalities, and particularly law enforcement are being held to much, much more stringent regulations concerning liability. And, you know, they, you can get sued over anything now. You don't only get sued anymore for, for, for what you did, you get sued now for what you don't do or what you should have done. The importance of HAGN ordinance is in place, that clearly define rules, regulations, procedures, and expectations of promoters and vent organizers is paramount. Presently, for the most part, event organizers and promoters are free to host an event in Biloxi with little or no input from, from city officials. If an organizer promotes a citywide event and doesn't rent or specify a particular venue within the city, then it is likely that no license or permits will be obtained, meaning that no fees are assessed and no taxes are collected. Promoters of these events may, may be collecting fees from online ticket sales, promotional products, et cetera, without ever requiring any type, or acquiring any type of business license or permit. However, city resources are utilized out of necessity and public safety. The city's infrastructure is strained, traffic issues intensify, and citizens frustration peaks, culminating in many, 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 many complaints and calls to city officials, the police department, and all city departments. Taxpayer dollars are consumed by these unapproved events and little regard to the problems they cause. And you'll see there, in summary, I'm gonna leave the summary for you, but it's pretty much what we've, we've touched on already, but I would just ask that you, you think about these things, look at them closely, and then the very last page lays out how much it has cost for each event. Now, included second liners in there, which is not a huge, not a huge event, however, second liners is on the same day as Neptune, so I felt obligated to put that in. These numbers will be low, these are not accurate numbers, they will be at least this much, but if we actually sat down and really figured everything in with the amount of overtime, food, fuel, and everything, they, all these would, would, would go up more. And that, that I can guarantee you, so if you'd like any of this on paper, anything that I can show you, I can break it down by different, different departments throughout the city. The numbers that you're seeing there right now basically include the police department, the fire department, and public works. But I, but those are broken down even more, if you'd like to see that. I can provide that anytime. I can provide pretty much anything you need in here. If you question any of it, I think I can provide some solid foundation for it.
Appreciate it, Chief. Do we have any questions? We'll start with Mr. Lawrence, work this way.
Yeah, I noticed you didn't have the St. Patrick's Day parade in there. Any particular reason?
It's not, it's just not considered the huge, what I put there were just the huge events, with the exception of second liners, because second liners falls on the same day. St. Patrick's Day is an event for us, several officers have to come out, but with the majority of the events that you see here, it's all hands-on-deck, and second liners is, I mean, St. Patrick's Day is not one of those all hands-on-deck events. It falls into that other 80 to 100 events that we have a year. So, all those add up, and like I said earlier, you may have three, four, or five of those events on a single weekend.
Yeah, the Billfish tournament is another big tournament that doesn't affect you that much?
It does.
It's in the harbor of what?
It does, it affects us a great deal, you know, just like St. Patty's Day, but it still doesn't fall into that top eight. But again, it's one of those 80 to 100 that we have to deal with every year.
Okay, we have two or three fishing tournaments during the summer.
Yeah. But it's, again, they're not all hands-on-deck, and they're expensive, most of those are probably costs of somewhere around $10,000 to $20,000. And it takes maybe a dozen officers to do one. But again, if I had entered, if I had put all that in here, it would have just been overwhelming, so I just included the large events. Keep it in mind that those eight large events that we have every year are, are the ones that are all hands-on-deck, but the 80 to 100 after that accounts for a whole lot of officers having to give up weekends off, days off, just to get them covered.
I noticed the Seaford Museum had that drawdown, and I think there was six offices there. Where did they come from? Is that regular offices, or is that security?
No, that's, that's gonna be officers that were overtime, because when we schedule, we schedule officers, officers to work daily, we schedule one in each beat, one in each beat, and then two or three supervisors to cover them. That's how they're scheduled. So, if there's something away from the normal, everyday activity, it has to come from an officer who's off-duty that comes in.
Thank you.
Mr. Gons? Ms. Newman? Mr. Demming?
Chief, I know we've spent lengths of time discussing ordinances regarding special events, so I'm not questioning the need for it. We do need to do something to help you organize these events and keep the city safe. I know we've seen some things right now with cruising the coast that have made headlines, and, and it's unfortunate. When I look at this, what jumps out at me is the inconsistency in the cost per officer, and I wondered if you could help me out, so I could understand that right now, it's on your list, it has about $3,000 per officer for cruising the coast, but only $1,500 for spring break, 500 or so for Neptune. Why, why do we have such inconsistent numbers for the cost per officer, per event?
Well, that, that's not actually cost per officer. I mean, I can break that down for you, that's overall costs.
Okay.
But cruising the coast is a week-long event. Neptune and Gulf Coast Carnival, even though there, there are balls and things like that, where there's two or three officers working, those are one-day events. And, but, there is a difference in the cost per officer, because you have to figure in what rank they are, if they're, if they're a patrol officer, first, second, or third class, or if they're sergeant, or if they're lieutenant. And unfortunately, when we work these big events, it's all hands-on-deck. It does, your, your rank really doesn't come into it, you've got to be there in order for us to, to have enough officers to keep everybody safe. Traffic moving.
That's, I just wanted to better understand.
That's a good question, but I can break that down much better for you.
Let me jump in too, Chief. You know, we're looking at just workload in general, based on, on areas and where we are. You can only get 1,700 hours of work out of a person during a time, and again, you need the officer one, two, and three, and support, indirect support, it's all, and the benefits related to it. So, there's a, there's a line as an algorithm, if you will, where we need, you got X amount of man-hours, a person-hours that's needed for this event. So, you capture that and figure out how you distribute the personnel to meet the needs of, and so, and it's not just for PD, it's for everybody. What is it better? Where's the curve? Where, you know, overtime eliminates some things as far as indirect costs, but you don't want to kill anybody by making them work, you know, double the amount of time. So, that's, I guess, a line we're trying to derive and, and say this is best. And, you know, some people thrive on working as much as they can, which, you know, you know, if you're making money shoveling oysters, and you want to make more money, shovel more oysters.
Right.
You know what we're talking about? But anyway, you know, there's some arithmetic, there's some, there's some formulas that we're gonna try and, you know, put the numbers to and figure out where, what's our best position to take.
Mr. Mayor, in like-kind, I know there's a cost to policing these events, but there's also a cost to, to public works and everybody that does the cleanup, the setup. Do we have a breakdown of that, and if not, is there, can we get one?
We're, we're, this included. This is public works, fire department, and the police department.
Man-hours per category, I think is what you're drawing at.
I can break it down for you, but, you know, by department.
Thank you, Chief. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Tisdale?
Thank you, Mr. President. Chief, you may have these numbers handy, may not. Right now, we have how many sworn officers?
As of today, we have 137. And some of, some of those are in training, so they're not, we can't put them on the street yet.
147?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And how many vacancies do you have that could be filled with more sworn officers?
So, I may have misspoke. I think we have 137 working right now, with 10 vacancies, with, with the mayor has promised 10 more if we can fill those vacancies.
Okay, and I'm, I'm thinking, the answer seems to be more officers, and, and then, of course, more money to pay those officers, and I'm thinking roughly, I'm gonna pull a number, I don't know how close I am, 70,000 per officer for their salary and for benefits.
I think that'd be, that'd be fairly accurate.
Chief, I heard you say not necessarily more officers, but fewer events.
Yeah, well, there, there's, there's what the mayor was talking about. There's that magic.
The arithmetic is there, and you look at, you know, what it really does, to the positive or to the negative, to our, what impact to our budget, but also, you know, our, our quality of life, having these events and the attraction that we need. We don't want to dry it up, we want to, you know, make it where it's the most beneficial to everyone.
So, if we could, if we could control, at least control some of when the events are, remember earlier I said there would, there could be three or four or five events in a single weekend? And that, that is murder, trying to keep up with that, that many, that many events in a single weekend. So, if we can, if we could stretch those out, everybody might not have their event exactly when they want it.
Well, a little bit of automation thrown in the civic record, we're talking about where we, we don't conflict in schedule and, and, you know, dry up the reservoir of what is needed versus public works, or, you know, those other things that need to be happened. So, we're invested in some, you know, some scheduling, personnel, software, as well as, you know, event planning, so it's, it's all in the ballgame. I think it's in the budget too, so, but, you know, that's a part of the matrix. If you fill in the matrix, you know a little bit about matrix and, and milage and all that sort of thing too.
I do, and levees as well.
Oh, where you going?
So, Chief, given a city this size, really just two more comments. One, if we were able to fill those 10 vacancies and then locate another 10 officers, that would give us 157. For a city this size, is that about where you want to be, or in an ideal world, maybe you'd like a few more?
We really can't, we, size is just part of it.
Right.
Look, I don't want to interrupt, but this city, this city is different than others than 50,000 people. We've got 7, 7,000 hotel rooms a weekend, it jumps, so, I mean, this city, Biloxi, is different than everybody, and it's a challenge we have, you know, across the board. This is a little bit different, this is more supportive of 100,000 people at any one point in town, especially this weekend. So, we're, we're right, we're saying the same thing, I think we need to take a comprehensive look.
I'm still, I'm still on my matrix, so...
So, size, size is one part of it.
Right.
Normal people that we have in Biloxi every day is something else, and the number of events you have to add to it. So, the mayor's right, we need to be prepared to police 100,000 people every day.
And, and how many officers, that's what I'm trying to get at, about how many? If you had, if we got 10 and 10 more that the mayor promised you would be at 157, would we need a few more than that?
I honestly believe that from where we're at right now, between 30 and 35 officers, I think if we did that, you would see a, you would see a great reduction in overtime. You would absolutely see that.
And that, that's the other concern, because I recall you'd mentioned a couple of times this past year, that some of these officers are working 23, 24 days without a day off, and then some are injured and can't come to work. You're trying to arrange vacation time, and with some officers, at some point, time is more valuable to them than working and, and making more bucks. The other thing is, in scheduling these events with the proposed special events ordinances, I think that's one thing that the, the special events coordinator, working with the proposed special events committee, would be able to schedule these things. Am I correct?
That, that is correct.
So, if we were able to do that, then that gives you a greater chance of, I guess, scheduling officers to, to meet the needs of the department, not just the, meet the needs of the public, but also the needs of the department, because I, I can see how morale would be affected. I'm done, thank you.
I appreciate it. Mr. Glavin, any questions?
I, I don't know, I don't know if I have questions, but I have a couple of comments. Obviously, we, we've reached a point where we got to plan and prepare differently with some of these events as, as we've grown. I think we need to be careful about saying fewer events, I think better quality events, that we can work with the organizers to ensure that it has the elements of safety and the elements that we know what the expectations are, and they know what the expectations are as well. I mean, we're, we're a tourism town, ain't no doubt, we are growing, thanks to the mayor building the infrastructure, making it safe and friendly and appealing and attractive, and we want to continue that. We just got to find a way, you know, not only are the officers that we have, they're, they're certainly due to their quality of life and their quality time, but we got to find the outside resources like we have in the past and try to get creative with that. I see my friend in, in the back, you know, perhaps we need to look at these outside security firms, maybe there are even more, and as we prepare for these events, kind of line that up in advance to make sure that we have the proper number of security personnel to support our law enforcement, you know, as we create our tourist, top-tier tourist destination. That's all I want to.
If I could just make a comment, if I could make a comment on that. So, you know, we, anything's on the table, you know, we're, we're open to anything, you know, we're the ones that deal with this regularly, so we understand the importance of the events. However, in the events ordinance, there's a section that allows us to put the event together, the cost of the event, and what is, what is, what the details are to that event, and it's presented. And at that point, you decide whether or not this event is worth the money that it's gonna cost. It's that simple. You decide. Here decides.
Let me jump in too. I mean, we're here, it's all, anything's possible, given time and money. We're looking at the expense side, we assume the expense side, because we're a city, but basically, there should be some mechanism too. There's our ROI. Who's, who's realizing this? Okay, from gaming, from every stretch, we can't expect, you know, abhorrent taxes or cities to, because these extraordinary events send money other places instead of just all us. So, I mean, there's some ways that we would say, okay, you know, we know, it's, it's easy, the arithmetic is easy when it comes to gaming and some of these other things. So, we want to, you know, be reasonable and be wise on what we can expect for support. Hey, we'll deliver this, I'm not, we just want to make this thing as safe, as friendly, as attractive as, but, you know, don't, I don't want to give up any, you know, any opportunity to get us some offset on what the, you know, the results of this, like sales tax, like different, you know, income streams for somebody. So, we just need to be fair. I mean, we're assuming a big load, a lot of responsibility, and, you know, that will, that will make us successful or unsuccessful, and, and these things will rise up if we're not successful. It's my intent to do it the right way every time, and it takes money, and it takes dedication, and it takes, you know, commitment to do these things the right way on every occasion. May it please the court.
The way I envisioned it, now this is just me, but the way I envisioned this, if it's presented and, and...
of these other things. So we want to, you know, be reasonable and be wise on, uh, what we can expect for support. Hey, we'll deliver this. I'm not, we, we just want to make this thing, uh, as safe, as friendly, as attractive as, but, you know, don't, I don't want to give up any, uh, you know, any opportunity to get us some offset on what the, you know, the results of this, like sales tax, like different, you know, income streams for somebody. So we just need to be fair. I mean, we're assuming a big load, a lot of responsibility and, you know, uh, uh, that will, that will make us successful or unsuccessful. And, and these things will rise up if we're not successful. It's my intent to, uh, do it the right way every time. And it takes money and it takes dedication and it takes, you know, commitment to do, uh, these things the right way on every occasion. May it please the court.
The, the way I envisioned it, now this is just me, but the way I envisioned this, if it's presented and, and, and the mayor, the council determine that, man, this is, you know, for this event, this is a lot of money that the city's spending, you know? Then at that point, you make the determination whether, what, what part of it is this promoter going to pick up? It's a new event. It's not established. It's never been before. You determine what, what part are they going to pick up on this? And then the following year, if that, if that, if that event was, was a great event and it, it did some things for the city, then you adjust it. I mean, I, I don't know any other way that, that it's, it's going to work, but you're going to have to look at each event individually and make your adjustments to it. And, you know, if it, if it turns out it's benefit the city, then you just readjust it the next year.
I, I just also want to comment that we can't, uh, forget about another revenue stream that doesn't come to the city, but those hotel rooms generate a five percent tourism tax. Uh, about two and a half percent goes to the Coliseum, another two and a half percent goes to coastal Mississippi for marketing, the Mississippi Gulf Coast, to ensure that we, uh, have all those visitors, uh, that visit the coast. That's important not to lose sight of the amount of money that, uh, some of these events can generate, uh, to make sure those coffers are filled so we can, uh, uh, carry on that work of competing against our surrounding neighbors. But, but I do appreciate that this, the work that we're doing is necessary, uh, to make sure that we can continue to provide safe and, and, and events that are going to be productive, uh, for what we all expect.
Uh, Councilman Lemon, I like to, you hit a point too. Couple of years ago, we, uh, put a two million dollar project to remove, I don't know how many tons of sand before cruising. And that was a combination of, of the county and coastal Mississippi and us.
That's right.
And, and I think, uh, our public works did a great job in, in not only preparing for this, but the presidential event. But, uh, I think what we did a few years ago together, you know, I think they recognize that any help to the city in preparation for these events, uh, well, you know, well worth it. So that's our pitch to everybody. I mean, we may be, uh, you know, talking a lot of money, a million a year for those kinds of things that would, uh, obviously benefit everybody. You know, if we did a bad job on those events, wouldn't be successful.
Sure.
Got to do a, a good job every time. That's it.
I have nothing. I appreciate it.
All right. I, I appreciate your time. And I, again, I just wanted to present to you the facts of, of, from the PD.
Just the facts.
Just the facts, ma'am. Just the facts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
We'll now move to our council reports. Start to my left. Mr. Lawrence, you have thirty seconds.
Yeah, I'll stop at thirty seconds. That ain't going to happen. The only thing I have to say to finish up on the, the last conversation, you know, we are a tourist town. You want people flocking in there. They do. They come to the city of Biloxi. So we just got to be able to handle it. You had one bad event here, that was one of them, didn't work out. The rest of them turned out great. A lot of people, right now, are cruising. They're everywhere. They're coming, they're coming Saturday. So they'll be here for a week and a half. So if we ask them to come, then we make sure we take care of them. And whatever we have to do, chief, then we have to do it. But, you know, you can't be chopping up these events that's so big and so successful now. So we got to stay in the right mode. It's a tourist town. Biloxi, that's where they come. They come here to have a good time. And we have to treat them right and take care of them. So like I said, awesome, I made a few things with, uh, cruising. This place, wherever you go is packed. Went by Kenny's the day at Margaritabill. I mean, wherever you go, if they come in early, then they're not missing anything. And they run through the twelve cities and all of the cities are packed. So it's, it's been really good as far as the cruising. Next thing is a statement I need to make to Robert. I know he got himself in a little trouble. I'm, uh, just going to ask him, as still being under arrest, if he would consider stepping back for sixty to ninety days as a leave of absence to get himself together, to find out what he has to do to win the case. He's innocent for proving guilty like anybody else in the court system. So I would hope that he would do that. Set himself up, win the case, come back, welcome home to the city council. So I'm just suggesting to you, Robert, to think that in integrity of the council, the way we work here, we all work together. We, you've been together for ten years, this group here. So, I mean, it's all like little family. So we, we want you to get the best done for you, to make sure you prove yourself innocent. But I think that the integrity of the council right now, a lot of people feel like we need to do something. And that's why I figure maybe you step back sixty, ninety days as a leave of absence and get all your stuff together and, and go from there. So I would should appreciate you if you'd consider that. Thank you.
Is that all you have? All right, Mr. Guines?
I have another thing.
Ms. Newman? Mr. Demming?
I know we miss you for a few meetings and, and, uh, Mr. Smith did a great job filling in for you. Can you give me an update? I know we sent the, the paving projects out for bid. The bid came in. Where are we at on that?
They actually are going to start, there were, they're going to start Thursday of this week. They're originally going to start downtown, but it's cruising, so they're going to jump out and do Skeet Hunt Road first. And then next week, come downtown. And after downtown, Sun Kissed area is after that.
Do we have a, a projected, and I won't hold you to a hard and fast headline, but is there something I can give the ward?
Maybe, maybe like a month. Because it's going to take them almost a week to get all the way down Skeet Hunt. Downtown roads aren't that long. So I, I'd say by a month.
Okay.
They'll be out in that.
I know you also sent out a, an update on, I think it was the underwater vegetation issue.
Yes, yes.
Can you, can you brief me on that?
Yes. So we are working through the process with National Marine Fisheries and Mississippi Wildlife and Fisheries. Um, this is a new process for everybody. So there's lots of requirements. We've submitted, um, a draft plan. They came back to us with a bunch of different comments on things that we need to address. Um, we have to be able to track the growth of the submerged vegetation. We have to be able to track somehow that, um, that the fish habitat is not being destroyed. The fish are still living. Um, so we're kind of working through those details. Our consultant, Seymour Engineering, has kind of been going back and forth with them on some guidance on how we track and monitor those things. Um, but it's so far, we haven't been told no. I don't, I think we're going to eventually get there. It's just going to take us a little while to kind of get through, check all the boxes with Marine Fisheries. Um, but it's moving along.
Well, thank you. I know we've been fighting to get some of these areas stretched for a long time.
Well, and they're, they're finally now at least talking to us about mitigating. Where for all these years, they wouldn't, it wasn't even an option. So that's a huge step. So.
That is. And thank you so much for, for everything you've done to get this moving forward.
Absolutely.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Tisdale?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if I'm going to get this right. So, so Peter, help me. All right. I'm counting on you, Peter. Uh, I'd like to issue a charge to the Planning Commission to study and suggest a limitation or cap on short-term rentals in zones that require a conditional use. Do I need to do anything more than that, Peter? Does it require a resolution or is this sufficient?
Charge.
Charge. I mean, I mean, we've issued charges before, but.
Yeah, I think that's good.
Okay. Well, thank you. Uh, Jerry, if you, you know, if you have questions later, but that's basically, and I know these tend to be the hot button issues with short-term rentals in those particular zones. They're permitted by right in a number of zones and prohibited in some zones. But I think right now, we have about four hundred and twenty-five short-term rentals. And, uh, of those, I think fifty-five required, uh, conditional uses. And I know we have a complex with, with, I think it's sixty units under construction that have already been approved. So they will be issued. But I think that might have been a rezoning, I think for that. But, but I'm thinking and, and in this charge, the Planning Commission would, uh, advertise, conduct public hearings or whatever. So it's going to be, uh, a number of weeks before, um, I guess, the response to the charge is presented to the council for consideration. That's it. Thank you.
Mr. Glavine?
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I got a few items in my ward, and then I, I want to make a brief statement on another issue. But, uh, Kimbrough, I, I continue to get questions. If the median, when you turn into Kimbrough, is that the city's responsibility to maintain? Or is that the neighborhood's responsibility to maintain? I'm, I'm having a hard time getting clarification there. So if you don't have the answer today, that's fine.
Yeah, I'll get it for you.
Okay, thank.
By next week.
Thank you, counselor. Appreciate that. Um, I know I've talked to the chief about some speeding, uh, issues. Uh, I think most recently, we, I exchanged a text. But, um, particularly Malpus Landing, I'm starting to get more complaints out of that neighborhood. I've never received really a lot of, uh, speeding complaints out of that neighborhood, but I'm, I'm starting to get some. Pops Ferry Road seems to be ramping up with some speed. I don't know if it's, has anything to do with the, uh, new roadway that diverts traffic, uh, from DeIverville now a little bit more easily, uh, coming down through Pops Ferry. But I am getting, uh, quite a few, uh, reunion plays. Um, I'm meeting with their HOA Sunday, um, to discuss speed bumps. And I told them the process. I told them the traffic committee would have to re, review it, see if there is a recommendation or some alternative, um, speed deterrent that we can put in place. But I am meeting with that, uh, HOA this Sunday at their request.
That, that survey's been turned over to the traffic committee. They have that.
Okay. Thank you, chief. I appreciate that. Um, lighting, I know I've talked, uh, at this, uh, meeting before, been part of my report. Uh, I've talked to, uh, Shane, uh, on the school, uh, board. I talked to Superintendent Boudreau, who also said he had a nice conversation with the mayor. Um, I've also, uh, spoke to Kevin Felcher, who actually plays out at the tennis court and, uh, said that he would, uh, also speak to some folks, uh, to see if we can move the needle. Uh, since then, I know there's, uh, two or three quotes that are circulating around, but there seems to be a keen interest in the Biloxi School District possibly joining us, uh, to get those, uh, lights maybe taken care of at the, uh, tennis court. Uh, that being said, uh, and I know the dog park has some issues that we're trying to continue to address. Just want to make sure that all of this work, over five million dollars that we're doing to the improvements at AJ Holloway Sportsplex, it, it would, it wouldn't serve it justice if, uh, the lights don't work properly out there. So I hope we can find a way, uh, to find a program, whether it's leasing, purchasing, or whatever, that we can fix those lights. As I understand it, it's been explained by the director, those lights, we can't replace them because they don't make those bulbs anymore. So now it's not a simple task of replacing those light bulbs. Um, paving, uh, I noticed, I got a notice today on Skeet Hunt, uh, that Skeet Hunt is now, uh, being teed up for paving. I didn't expect that. I, I thought it was going to be a little later. Uh, so, uh, Director Lebatard, is there a reason that that got put up? I mean, I'm not complaining. Is there a reason that it got pushed up to the top of the list?
Honestly, I, I don't know. They just, they were going to start on downtown, but we had cruising and they were anxious to go ahead and get started because we've been kind of pushing him. And he said, well, we can do Skeet Hunt. And we said, okay, sounds good. So we can be there in two days. We're like, done. Come on.
Well, that's, that's great. Y'all, uh, I commend you for the, uh, it, you know, speeding up these, uh, projects in the way, manner that y'all do. It's, it's really, uh, I appreciate it. And just stay there one more second. I got, uh, one more thing I want to just put on my report today on Oak Ridge. Uh, we discussed that there's kind of a, a steep berm or a slope at, uh, some of the residences' ditches and making it very difficult, if impossible, for them to mow their lawn. Uh, my understanding is that you've come up with a potential, uh, a potential cure or remedy for that?
Yes. Um, I think we can go in with our repair or replace contract and just basically take those ditches and make them swales. They'll still function just fine. They have really large yards there, so it won't impact anything. We just basically smooth out the banks of those ditches so that they can get their lawn mowers through them.
All right. Thank you for that. Uh, I'm going to make a pass to that neighborhood next week and, and knock on some doors and visit with some folks. So I'll make sure I give them that update. Thank you very much. Um, and then I, I do want to conclude with this. Uh, we are, um, we are appointing a vice president, uh, today. But I want, the reason I want to make this statement is to make it clear and transparent to my colleagues on, on the council, to Mr. Demming, uh, to folks that have called me, and to not leave anything up in the air of what are you doing or not doing, or what are you thinking? So I just want to make a brief statement. Um, I want to express, um, my thoughts on this decision to replace Councilman Robert Demming as the vice president of the council. It is crucial to, uh, recognize that this action is not a reflection on Mr. Demming's guilt or innocent regarding his legal issues. Instead, it's a necessary step to ensure the smooth functioning of the council while he follows his due process and, and addresses those matters. As public servants, our primary responsibility is to serve our constituents and uphold the values of transparency, accountability and integrity in situations where a council member's legal issues may hinder their ability to fulfill their duties. It becomes essential to make decisions in the best interest of the community we represent. By taking this action, the council demonstrates its commitment to maintaining the public's trust and ensuring that the work we do remains focused on meeting the needs of our constituents. It allows us to continue our efforts to address the local issues, make informed decision and advocate for the welfare of our community. It is important to emphasize that this decision does not prejudge Councilman Demming's legal situation. He is entitled to due process and we must respect the, the legal proceedings that will determine the outcome. And in the meantime, the council will move forward, working diligently to fulfill our obligations and maintain the public's confidence in our ability to govern effectively. We remain dedicated to our constituents and will continue to serve them in the best of our, to the best of our abilities, ensuring that our decisions are made in a fair, responsible and ethical manner. Our focus remains on the betterment of our city, and we will work tirelessly to achieve that goal. Thank you.
All right. I only have a couple of things, um, actually, one thing to two people. Um, Chief Miller and Cecilia, uh, duck seasons, duck hunting season's coming up. And, you know, every year, it's something we, we deal with. And so they, the residents in that area have already reached out to me, even though it's not started yet, and asked that we take some proactive measures. So like in the next, um, B news that goes out, could we maybe on the front page make sure, you know, that everyone is made aware that duck hunting in the city limits is not legal? And then possibly some signage at the boat ramps out in the, the Wool Market area, um, to, 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 to help out. And, you know, we get, we get these calls every year. And, and I know I, I ring your phone to death whenever. Um, so they're just asking if we could possibly, you know, do this a little bit in advance and maybe try to circumvent some of the issues that we have.
Let me comment.
Yes, sir.
Wool Market Planning Commission has brought that up a number of times during the right time of year. And it's not covered in a special event ordinance either.
Yeah. All right. Another ordinance then. That's all that I have. That'll be the end of the council's reports. We'll now move to the public agenda. Citizens' comments. Each citizen will have the opportunity to speak up to three minutes. At three minutes, the bell will ring. That means your time is up and you cannot continue to talk. Um, if you want to speak, you can come forward to the desk and sign in, state your name and address, and you will be allotted three minutes. We'll start on my left-hand side of the room and your right-hand side. And, uh, George, there's a guy behind you already up. Let's grab him first. And, and when you come forward, just please sign in and state your name and address. And, and we'll, we'll get as many people as we can within that forty-five minute period.
Good evening. Uh, I just wanted to ask one question. Uh, what is the status of loaves and fishes? I noticed on social media, they moved to the Mercy Cross property. And within the next few days, it's, everything's dark. Uh, nobody's getting fed. Uh, does anybody know anything about that?
This isn't a question or answer session, but someone, it's, someone with the, we can get someone to answer your question, um, after the meeting or if one of them want to talk to you.
Fair enough. Uh, it appears that, uh, they have been denied at every turn to be able to operate and provide support to people that desperately need it. We have been helping to fill those gaps on the days that they're unable to operate. Now, only a small few organizations are the only ones serving them. And the gaps have become large and unacceptable to the individuals that depend on it. Who is going to fill these gaps? Loaves and fishes needs this city as much as the city needs them. Uh, Guffport has Feed My Sheep that operates five days a week. Ocean Springs has The Lord Is My Help, which also operates five days a week. Why does it seem so challenging for us to achieve the same here in Biloxi? The issue does not only affect the homeless. The issue does not only affect the homeless, but it also affects the elderly and other residents on the verge of homelessness, they also rely on these meals. The Better Way to Give Foundation has stated in the last town hall meeting that there is twenty thousand dollars sitting dormant in the fund. Why can't a small fraction of that help curb hunger? My great-grandmother, Amanda Miladnich, immigrated from Croatia in the early nineteen hundreds. In the forties, she opened up Serve Right Grocery on the corner of Division and Bone Street and operated there until nineteen eighty-five. She taught me many things, including work ethic, but her best trait was giving. She never turned down anyone with their inability to pay. We need more people in this world like her to continue the Croatian spirit of giving. The issue with homelessness will not go away, no matter how much they are being ignored. I encourage everyone in this room to find a compassionate solution in this matter. Thank you Mayor Gillage and the City Council for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Can you, sir, sir, can you, can you state your name one more time for the record?
James Coleman, sixty-two fifty-two Emerald Lake Drive.
Thank you.
James.
All right.
Give you a call tomorrow.
Good evening, my associate is going to pass out a package to you, I'm going to sign in, and I will proceed momentarily.
Hey, man.
We met with him today, so.
Good job.
I'm here to oppose commercial development at sixteen-eleven Glenn Swetman Street. Dr. Tisdale, thanks for your comments, not only short-term rentals, but Airbnbs and bed and breakfasts and all of that. The first thing you'll see in your package is that we have ninety-eight people on a petition in the heart of this area who oppose this. We will have more in two weeks at the second reading, and when you vote, I have a lot of people behind me, some are going to speak, some are not, but if you are opposed to this, will you please stand up or raise your hand so that we will know that yes, indeed, there are people opposed to this, and there are ninety-eight people on these petitions. We have a layout of the neighborhood that we've given you, you will see that this is clearly a single-family residential seven-point-five neighborhood. You know, we have people that want to come in and literally change the scope of the neighborhood. There's absolutely no reason for this, if it was west of Ibraville towards the beach, that's fine, but when you look across the entire area, when you look at what's going on in places like Bill Morrison and Ibraville and Clower, Cayman, Miramar, people are spending their money all across that area to improve their houses in a single-family residential neighborhood. If you look at the area where this proposed activity is located, on their block alone, if you take the block, and it's an L-shaped block, there are thirty-four single-family residential houses on that block. There are three more that are either under construction or going to come out of the dirt soon, very close to this proposal. This is a single-family neighborhood. If people are going to spend their money to improve their homes and build new homes, they're doing it because it's a single-family seven-point-five. Tell me why you would change that, there's absolutely no reason to do so. I gave you a copy, I'm going to run out of time, but I gave you a copy of the bed and breakfast ordinance, there's some things in there that need to be addressed, the ratio of property to land and drainage, I think drainage is going to be a huge problem, but this just opens a big can of worms for other people that might want to come in and do this, and I'm going to run out of time, some other people are going to speak, but it is time to put a cap on this and, you know, be done with this conversation. This was defeated last year, you voted against it last year, you should do the exact same thing, because other than positive changes, there's no reason to allow this to pass. Thank you very much.
Come forward. Will sign in and state your name and address, please.
Good afternoon, I'm Bob Hudson at Ward One. I'm here with a number of people, as George just pointed out, here to protest the rezoning and conditional use permit for sixteen-eleven, Glenn Swetman. One-nineteen Jeff Davis. Just last month, the City Council listened to our concerns about these businesses and commercializations, and rightly voted to reject the conditional use permit in the RM-30 zone on Acacia. The majority of City Council heard our concerns of the folks that live here about the commercialization in the inner neighborhoods, thank you all for that. Now there's a request to actually rezone a current RS-seven-point-five residentially zoned home positioned well off the beach to RM-10 multifamily. Frankly, this is an even more audacious request by investors to spot zone a residence in the middle of our neighborhood, not even close to the beach, or in order to even apply for a conditional use permit, a real stretch. It appears investors want to buy up these cheaper properties in the middle of the neighborhoods versus buy and pay for properties that are more expensive but more appropriate for businesses. Does this, these pictures here look like a place for a hundred guests to stay? Sixteen-eleven Swetman is requesting a permit for a bed and breakfast. Based on the city's rules, this residence will be able to host up to as many as a hundred guests at a time, right in the middle of our neighborhood. Sounds crazy. This will also result in a huge commercial parking lot in the front of this home, which is surrounded by several residences. Imagine the increased traffic and noise for these folks if this rezoning of a neighborhood is successful. And again, like Acacia, the condition of our neighborhood roads are anything but ready for commercial traffic. I said this during the Acacia, it's, these roads are horrible, I just can't imagine that kind of traffic coming through there. Sixteen-eleven has not prepared the grounds for large guest parking, and the entrance to the parking is right next to a house that has a large tree in the middle of the driveway where they'll access that parking lot. This is anything but ready for a hundred guests' operation. This is the entrance to that, the only entrance that I'm aware of, and that, with that plat, it'll show you where the entrance is. Once again, I stand here with my neighbors pleading to the City Council to stay the course that you've recently been on, and protect our inner neighborhoods from the commercialization. This request from sixteen-eleven Swetman is even more bold and defiant as they have to rezone in order to even apply for the permit to operate this business. I hope that the City Council will send a message to future investors coming in here to buy on the beach and spend the money necessary to properly start businesses where they should be, in Biloxi. Don't let them come in here and buy up and ruin our neighborhoods.
Please sign in and state your name and address.
Hi, everybody, my name is Dr. Yvonne Harrison, I live at one-forty-nine Acacia Avenue, three houses from the proposed bed and breakfast. I welcome a bed and breakfast at sixteen-eleven Swetman owned by Mr. and Mrs. Daniel Hoy. To be clear, I am not in favor of an Airbnb, nor a commercial district, nor a commerce center. Here is why I support the Hoy's Bed and Breakfast. It assists maintaining a dynamic and vibrant neighborhood. I do not desire any more houses being vacant, second homes with absentee owners or having owners that reside elseer, we already have more than an abundance of that. I desire neighbors like Heidi and Dan who are engaged in enhancing the neighborhood and community. The home, having been vacant for sixteen of the twenty years and occupied two to four times a year for long weekends over the two of the four years that it was occupied, of the remaining four years, had fallen into disrepair and was overgrown. Paid security was employed to prevent vandalism and other mischief, it was unsightly and a detriment to the neighborhood. Thankfully, Dan and Heidi have, through their hard work, talent, and despite limited resources, improved the property. With seventy-five-hundred square feet, six bedroom suites, and thirteen fireplaces, this behemoth is not representative of neighborhood housing. It is highly unlikely any family with the necessary means to live there would. Household light bulb replacement alone tops four hundred dollars. Located south of the rebel tracks, the cost of wind insurance is astronomical, doubling within the past year. An owner-occupied bed and breakfast is practical and realistic use for this property located on the southeast corner of the neighborhood's perimeter, it affords a safeguard to the residential area. Its private entrance off Ibraville Road with established parking does not interfere with neighboring homes. I applaud and respect my resilient, long-term neighbor owners who have gone the gumption to build back after Katrina. I know they fear the loss of the neighborhood they've worked tirelessly to restore. The streets are filled with robust memories, this is where they or their families were raised. We seek a healthy neighborhood where families can be raised, retirements enjoyed, safely age-in-place, and make new memories. We all wish to embrace the rich culture and southern hospitality to the area, we all desire good neighbors. Heidi and Hand, Dan and Heidi personified those attributes, friendly, helpful, considerate, tolerant of differences, sociable and trustworthy. I would ask those that stand in opposition to look within and ask themselves, are they being the neighbors they so keenly desire? Have they welcomed the Hoy's? Or they see them as outsiders? Have they accepted invitations to their homes or shunned them? Have they shared the story of bygone days and what they hold dear? What I ask you, dear council members, is you're incumbent to uphold the rules and regulations, but yet we have a hearing, we know things change. I ask you to honor the decision of the Planning Commission, what was unanimously approved a hundred percent to resilience. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Gabrielle Berdro, and I reside at one-seventy-five Miramar Avenue. I'm going to start off where my husband left off. Our only protection is zoning, following zoning rules, rules and regulations. We don't have covenants or HOA. Any through street from Highway Ninety to Irish Hill is not a good prospect for commercial development. If the street goes north of Irish Hill, those streets are much better, much better candidates. Would you, you would never approve this in Suncus, Holy Hills, Ancient Oaks, Edgewater Park, Edgewater Estates, so on and so forth. West of Ibraville and close to the beach is a more appropriate setting. The property was denied last year, and there have been no changes that merit a zoning change. In fact, the changes move towards more development in a single-family neighborhood than there is to granting a zoning change. One-one-six, Acacia was denied, and was denied in the Avalon-St. Charles ruling is under appeal and most likely will be overturned. It's time to, once again, to restate it, it's time to put a cap on the, the current number. And also to mention, in front of their house, which I do like the family, and I appreciate that they're here, but we did not notice that there was any sign for this meeting that was, it was no notification, we received no notification in the mail, there is no sign in front of their house. The roads currently look terrible, and we're going to be putting more traffic on our streets. Also, where is all the water going to be displaced? There, there has to be parking for all of these vehicles to come, and especially if there is event of a hundred folks, or they're allowed to have a hundred people, there needs to be parking for this. And there is a huge water displacement issue, which I'm sure with all of the pipes that are being redone out on Beach Boulevard, we can all agree that there is an issue with water and standing water. If my father was here, he would be able to go into the spiel, but he is not, and I clearly would not do it any good to, to expound on that. So I am going to give my husband's corny joke that he was going to tell you guys, since I have a whole forty seconds left. The setting for Gilligan's Island was, was an island in the specific, the Pacific, and that was the right place. Plus, if it had been swamps of Louisiana, the Cajun Navy would have rescued them, and there would have been only two episodes. Here we are at another episode, so that's our conclusion, thank you.
Please state your name and address and sign in.
I'm Colette Hudson, I live at one-nineteen Jefferson Davis. And I'm here to, oop, I haven't signed in yet. I'm here to speak in opposition to the rezoning and proposed bed and breakfast at sixteen-eleven Swetman Street. This would be a business nestled well into a subdivision, the third house down into a subdivision. If an exception is not made for them, if, if an exception is made for them, who's next? The original historical Swetman House down the street from them is currently being renovated and also of a substantial size, and next to them are three lots owned by investors with construction already started. Do we really know their intentions? Will they be businesses as well? We have a right to quiet enjoyment in our neighborhood, when will it stop? And that's it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else on my left side, your right side? Anyone on my left and your right?
My name is George Berger of the Fourth, and I live at one-seventy-five Miramar Avenue. I oppose this idea of sixteen-eleven Glenn Swetman Street. One of the reasons for this is, when you look at a zoning map, as my father has provided, you will see that there are plenty of zones nearby for this sort of bed and breakfast. Why, when you were considering buying a property, could we have, could you have not have gone there and saved us this, this idea and not encroach on a well-established neighborhood? And also, when you buy such a house and you're in such a neighborhood, somebody might go and say, well, there's a bed and breakfast here, I might not want to live here, and you are, and you are reducing the amount of citizens you have. And why would we want to do that? That can, that could lower the amount of business we get here in Biloxi. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else on my left side, your right side? If not, we'll move to the right side of the room, my right side, your left side, anyone that would like to speak? Anyone on my right side, please come forward, Mr. Hingen.
I'm Wayne Hingen, I'm an attorney in Biloxi, offices at nine-seven-nine Howard Avenue, and I represent Heidi and Dan Hoy regarding this bed and breakfast matter. It'll be heard again by y'all. In addition to the zoning amendment, there will be a conditional use issue before you. I would like to make a presentation, I have one, but I'm going to reserve that until the next time we meet on this issue. And I, I would only say, if you have any questions for now, ask me, I can probably answer any one of them related to this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else on my right side? Mr. Hingen, do you mind signing in, just for the record? Anyone on my right side, your left side? Anyone, please come forward. What we got?
Hi, I am Nikki Williams, two-four-nine-six Pass Road. You guys are going to be voting a resolution today for item number four D, I just want to make it known that I am present, if you guys get there and you have any questions, please just let me know.
All right, come on. Please sign in and state your name and address. Please sign in and state your name and address.
My name is Linda Giordelli, and I live at 169 Miramar Avenue. There has been a change. Last year, I opposed this initiative. I have researched, thought about it for an entire year. I called Martha Tripp very first thing and said, "I no longer oppose this initiative." I have the ordinance, we're simply not asking for a commercial change. This is, according to the ordinance, this is simply a low-density multifamily residential, RM10. No commercial at all. And this is in a neighborhood. You have the language here, in a neighborhood. Also, it discourages commercial exploitation. This is a couple that moved here. They could not apply for a zoning change until they owned the property. They took a leap of faith. And I'm not a peddler of fear. I have had numerous, numerous neighbors call me and say, "Oh, my God, if this goes through, there could be a bar. There could be a blah, blah, blah." And I said, "No, this is not a commercial zoning change. This is the low-density multifamily zoning change." And within your own language, as far as worldwide here, the city of Biloxi only requires within 200 feet to notify their citizens, the property owners. We are the only ones that would truly be affected by this bed and breakfast. Heidi and Dan are not investors. They're a couple from Wisconsin. It's as simple as that. He's a chef, she's a baker, and they're the loveliest people in our neighborhood. I do not like all the fear that has gone on, even today. Right before I came, someone called, "Well, you know, I'm just really worried about this. Are they gonna put a bar across the, you know, right in blah, blah, blah?" And I said, "No, do you think the city would allow a bar across from a children's park? No one can critically think anymore," it seems. I have contacted every one of you by phone, and I've sent you letters. This is simply, you know, as Mr. Lawrence said, this is a tourist town. A bed and breakfast is needed. I am one of those people who had reflected on this, and I have stayed at many, many bed and breakfasts. I even stayed at the Myrtles Plantation, the most haunted. Guess what? A lot of these bed and breakfasts are in residential neighborhoods. I've traveled all over. There is a need for a bed and breakfast because some people don't prefer hotels. They don't want to walk out into a parking lot. They don't want to worry about it. Some people just prefer the simplicity of a home. I hope you consider to change it to residential low-density RM10.
All right, is there anyone else on my right side, your left? Please come forward.
My name is Richard Giordelli. I live at 169 Miramar Avenue, and I'm in favor of the proposal of Heidi and Dan for their bed and breakfast. Years ago, when I was in the military, I learned one important lesson years ago when I was in the military, and one important lesson that stayed with me through my entire life. I had a senior chief that... I had a commission in the military, and this senior chief that was in the Navy for over 25 years turned to me once and said, "Hey, listen, I want to tell you something." He said, "The most important thing that you have to remember is that you always want to look after your people." He says, "That's the most important ethic that you have. If you don't do that, no matter what you do in life, it's unimportant, and you will never succeed. That's why we're here. We're looking after our neighbor, Heidi and Dan, with their proposal. They are some of the finest people that you will ever meet, and they are the people that we need here in Biloxi. In our street, in our immediate area, we have overwhelming support in favor of their proposal. It doesn't matter to me if Burdro has over 500 signatures, if he goes all the way to White Avenue and beyond. It's not the immediate area, and it's not gonna be applicable. Access to this property is going to be from Highway 90 onto Iverville, a short distance, and then is the driveway to their property. It's total ample parking, and it's more than sufficient to accompany the number of bedrooms that they have. And I'm asking the council, when we come to our next meeting, to consider this favorably in their favor because it's what Biloxi needs, and it's the right thing to do. Thank you."
All right, anyone else on my right side? Please come forward. Sign in, state your name and address.
Frank and Marty, that is 1556 Miramar Avenue, and also we're renovating the Swetman Home at 1596 Glen Swetman. I'm gonna make it quick, as I know everybody has stuff to do this evening. As you know, the Glen Swetman House has been in disrepair for a long time. We are stepping up. We are rehabbing it. It's gonna be our permanent home. We are very proud of what we've done so far. We are catty-corner from the proposed bed and breakfast. We are very, very excited to have something like that in our neighborhood. Five bedrooms will be, five cars at the most. They have plenty of parking. They don't even have to access that Miramar. They will be just coming down Glen Swetman and in. I don't see a problem with it. And Peter, you wanted me to give him an update on the renovation? Yeah, it's coming along nicely. We're about three weeks out from moving in. I know, Paul, you've been by, you've taken a look at it. If anybody wants to come by, I'd be happy to run them through the property and show you the changes. And that's it. Any questions?
It's not a question-answer session. Appreciate it. Thank you for your time. All right, anyone else? Anyone else on my right, your left? Please come forward.
I live on 198 Clower Street. The proposed bed and breakfast is line of sight from my front yard. I heard about this through some neighborhood conversations, walking the dog, et cetera. And the only formal approach I got was from George in his opposition. And I heard what he had to say, and I said I'd reserve my opinions on that until I talked and looked myself. And I would like to say that a lot of the arguments against that I've heard have been exaggerations and hyperbole. You know, one of them is, you know, "We could have a bar. We could have catering going on. We could have 100 guests there." I mean, I could have a party and have 100 people show up. That's not what the bed and breakfast is for. It's for six people. I've been there long enough to know that that building has been unoccupied, also with the Swetman Home falling into disrepair. And not only do I support the bed and breakfast, but I'd also have to say it would be a tragedy for any other option. It's a crown jewel of the neighborhood in the making. I would have my own loved ones stay there. The people are wonderful, but that's not the issue. The issue is what's going to happen to the neighborhood? What's going to happen to the property values? And I guarantee you, my property is going to be worth more money with that beautiful bed and breakfast at the end of the street, welcoming people to the neighborhood. I think it's a perfect opportunity for the neighborhood to take a great and beautiful step forward in terms of property values. I would also like to say that with the other supporting arguments that I've heard, I fully support them. And again, it would be a tragedy to turn this down. This is different. This is not the same as just some commercial establishment invading a neighborhood. This is part of the neighborhood. So anyway, I thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Is there anyone else on my right? Anyone else on my right, your left? Anyone on my right, your left? Is there anyone in the back of the room that would like to speak? Please come forward and sign in, state your name and address.
My name is Sid Trahan. I live at 127 St. George Avenue. I actually wasn't planning on speaking right, but I just wanted to remind you all that I hear people saying that, "Oh, it's just this. Nothing's ever gonna happen. Short-term rental, just a house. People want to rent it. Who's to come in? Everything's great. It's not gonna mess up the neighborhood." The property across the street from me on Avalon slash St. George Corner was a short-term rental that's actually in legal situation now, being... That turned down twice, being short-term rental. Now it's in court. They said nothing was gonna happen, but I just want to remind you all that not long after it became short-term rental, the police raided the house at 5:00 in the morning, and it was a meth house. So a few days later, the wife stabbed the husband. That actually happened. So this is what happens with these types of properties that aren't maintained or monitored by the people who own them. This situation might be a little different because they live there, but short-term rental in general, once you open Pandora's box and allow one in the neighborhood, it'll be hard to stop the next one. And it will eventually destroy these neighborhoods. And I agree with trying to set limits on the number in the city, but something seriously needs to be done to control this, and where the residents will have to keep doing this all their time. They spend a lot of their time trying to defend their own neighborhoods that are established for a very long time. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the room that would like to speak? Anyone else? All right, if not, citizens' comments are closed. We'll now move to the policy agenda. If you'll read item A, please.
Orders to approve a zoning map amendment to authorize a change in zoning for a single parcel of land from RS75 medium-density single-family to RM10 low-density multifamily residential for 1611 Glen Swetman Street.
I'll move it for discussion.
I'll second. This is just a first reading. It's been moved for discussion, and there's a second. This will be a second... There will be a second reading in two weeks on our third Tuesday meeting. Now move to item B.
Orders to approve a zoning map amendment to authorize a change in zoning for a parcel of land from RS5 high-density single-family residential to RM10 low-density multifamily residential for 321 Nelson Road.
I'll move it.
Second. We have a first and a second. Is there any discussion?
First reading.
Oh, it's a first reading, I'm sorry. All right, same thing. Two weeks will be second reading and discussion. Item C.
Orders to amend Chapter 10.5 Harbors, Marinas, and Waterways, Article 2, birthing rates.
I'll move it.
I'll second. All right, we have a first and a second. That's also a first reading. That was first by Mr. Lawrence, second by Mr. Gaines. Item D.
Resolution granting conditional use approval to authorize a retail sales of staff management for 2496 Pass Road.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Discussion?
Yes, this is to be used by a nonprofit organization. It's on the east corner of MacArthur and Pass Road. On the west corner, and everything along Pass Road, I think in that area is limited business. It's a commercial area. On the other corner is a short-term rental. Behind this property is residential, and my understanding is that the representative of Elijah's Closet has spoken with that homeowner, and they're gonna work, and they support this venture at this location. I believe it was approved by the planning commission unanimously. To the east of this property, right now, that property is currently vacant. I think there's only one person who spoke against this rezoning or this conditional use at the planning commission, and they were a couple of doors down. And I know that... Nikki, I forgot your last name. Forgive me. But Williams? Thank you. Took me a moment. I told you I'm horrible with names. But Nikki's here, and she's going to be managing that location. So if any of you have any questions, if you're not familiar with Elijah's Closet, they support foster families, whether they're adoptive parents or biological parents. And so anyway, just want you to know she's out there if you have questions, and I strongly support this. I appreciate your support on this matter. Thank you.
I have nothing additional to add. Any other comments?
I'm gonna ask a question. We had a couple calls from the people in that shopping center. Did they talk to the businesses inside that shopping center? Are they all right with this?
I'm not sure which shopping center you're speaking about.
Whatever the strips in here, they said they got businesses right on side of this. Might be a separate business, I'm not sure. Had a call from a couple different people.
Okay, yeah, they had one person who was a couple of doors down from this that had some concerns. And... But adjacent to the east, that property is vacant right now. I think it's up for sale or for lease. Elijah's Closet is gonna make improvements to the property to limit access, I guess, to the property. But other than that, that's the only objections I heard were from folks at the planning commission.
That's why I was asking you. Have you talked to the person who was objecting to it? Are they fine with it now? I don't need Jack Krill up there. I'm asking you a question.
Yeah, I don't think he's fine with it. And the one that objected, his son has a business a couple of doors down. He was worried about through, I think, through traffic to some extent, as well as people wandering through the back of those properties. But there's going to be a fence constructed that limits access to any of the other properties.
They, those owners that you're talking about, assumed that there was an easement that ran from their property over to MacArthur.
That's correct. And there is not.
There is no easement there.
That's correct.
So they are allowed to put the fence up.
That was one of the concerns.
Well, what does easement have to do with it?
Well, this easement ran behind three or four properties, that front Pass Road, and for years it had been used by all those businesses, either parking for their customers or for the owners. And that's what the, I guess, the major objection to the gentleman who spoke at the planning commission. But that disappeared, and I think the planning, that concern disappeared, and the planning commission, if, as I recall, the president of the planning commission said, "You may want to check your, I guess, your legal description to see what sort of easement that is, whether you have to leave it open or not." And obviously, they did not.
They approved it with the understanding that it would go back to DRC so that we could verify that there was no easement running through there. Now traditionally, there is a drive that ran, just like you said, Dr. Teasdale, from that other property all the way through to MacArthur, but it was never a recorded easement. And because it's not their only means of getting in and out of that property three lots down, then it can be closed off with a fence.
Right, they all have access to Pass Road. And it's, and I believe, I know the gentleman you're speaking of. It's interesting that with his concerns, he never called me since it's in his ward, but I understand that, and you may understand that as well.
He was talking about more, he was worrying more about the clientele. What type of clientele you're supposed to have. Could ask for that?
No, the clientele.
That was my, that was his concern to me.
Sure, the clientele is going to be people who are either dropping off items that are being donated for Elijah's Closet, or they're going to be biological or foster parents who are coming to that location to pick up items. Ms. Williams?
Yes, that's right.
I didn't mean to steal your thunder. I've shared everything... I, I've, I've shared everything I know to this point. You're on your own.
That's accurate. So we serve, we partner with CP organizations like CPS, CASA, Southern Christian Services. We work through a referral program. So we do not have the ability to vet the families that we assist. So we partner with these organizations, the social workers refer them to us for assistance. Once we get the referral, we will arrange pickup of the donated items, typically clothing, shoes, beds are our biggest request. And the social workers or the biological families will pick up.
Just trying to clarify this. Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? If not, I'll call for the question. All in favor? Seven zero.
Thank you, Ms. Williams.
Now move to item E.
Resolution granting conditional use approval to authorize a private club slash lodge at 1177 Judge Sequel Avenue.
Do I have a motion?
I'll move it.
All right. Have a second?
I'll second it.
Have a first by Mr. Lawrence, second by Mr. Tisdale. Discussion?
I would like to table this and I'll tell you why. Jerry, we're working on this overlay district. This is right outside the gate and I don't, I don't exactly call it a private club or just a bar. I'm not really sure. So I think we need to look at that when you're doing this overlay district because we've got another one of these places on hold and I think we need to do the same thing with this. So my suggestion, I'd like to table this. I'm not going to pass it. We don't need a bar right now. I know Fofa's met with Kiesler, says that's right outside the gate. So we're going to do an overlay district. Let's get all this straight at one time.
Okay. Let me, let me clarify. It's not a bar. What they're wanting to do, this is a gentleman, a group of gentlemen that are renting a small tenant space at a little strip center there on Judge Sequel where they can smoke cigars and watch football. That's it. There's no selling of alcohol. There's no live entertainment, nothing. I'm not sure if Mr. Johnson is, is here tonight, but, but that's what was proposed.
So this is more of a cigar lounge like?
That's what it is, yes.
Okay. So it's not going to be a, you know, nightclub?
But it's not a retail space at all, right? There's no retail.
Specifically, we questioned him specifically, will there be live entertainment? No. Will there be any alcohol sold? No. It's just Mr. Johnson and a group of his friends, I think he said not more than 16, that would go there to smoke and watch football.
Could they bring their own brown bag?
Not to the Planning Commission.
Are there, are there any memberships left? Do we know that?
I don't know.
So you're saying they're not going to have alcohol at all?
I, I didn't say that they're not going to sell alcohol, that it's not a bar.
We had this problem with a couple of other brown bag places that we already, so we already had this problem. So that makes even worse than gee, not selling anything and not a bar, but they're going to operate like a bar.
Is Mr. Johnson here?
Now that, didn't we just pass something the other day on that same thing?
I think that goes with the cigars.
But they're a private, this is a private club.
But if it's going to be a private club.
This is a private club. That doesn't apply.
That makes it, right, that makes it a little different.
That thing said private clubs. Yes, it did.
This is a membership club. He's taught, it said nightclub. This is a membership club. This is.
It said private clubs or lodges.
Private club or lodge.
I did say that.
Yeah, yeah. That's kind of like the Elks Lodge when Elks Lodges is.
Jerry, you called this a gentleman's club, didn't you? You said there was three gentlemen.
But it is conditional use and if there are problems, you know, the conditional use permit can be revoked.
Kidding.
And we had more trouble with brown bag than we have with anything.
Yeah, I could.
There's no control there.
Now that you explain it, I can, I can deal with it because I was concerned about it myself with, with George was saying.
So that's why I wanted to table it to make sure that it was all right with Kiesler, not you, Jerry, Kiesler. But I would, the only reason I asked to table it, so I feel like I'd throw it on the table. I'd like to find out from them what they think about it, especially if it winds up with brown bag. That makes it even worse to me.
Okay. So we have a motion to table. Is there a second?
Yes.
All right. We have no seconds, so lack of.
Can we continue with discussion at this point?
Yes, yes.
So we talked about an overlay and as I recall, in that area, as Mr. Lawrence had mentioned, and there was a cannabis dispense, not dispensary, a cannabis processing facility that, that was tabled and has been tabled. And I don't, and I, I know there was talk of an overlay. Has any overlay come to the Planning Commission for that area yet, Jerry?
Not yet, but it should be there very shortly. We have laid out the lines for where the overlay district would, the areas that it would encompass. But when you're creating an overlay district, you also have to create the specifics about what's going to be allowed in there and what's not. You also have to, we also have to incorporate some of those features from the JLA study like limited height and limited density. So it's taken a little longer than we have, but we do have the areas spelled out.
Any anticipation of the date when it might be coming to the council?
I would say probably within the next month.
Sometime in November then, the next five or six weeks?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Question, Peter, on the, the brown bag business, just from what I recall, since this location would not have an ABC permit or anything, they're not serving alcohol. If they were going to brown bag it with booze or whatever, they'd have to be what, closed at what time? Midnight, I think?
Midnight.
Or they couldn't serve any, anything after midnight, correct? They could remain open, they just couldn't serve anything if they brought it in themselves after midnight. I, I think that's what, what I'm, I guess what I'm getting at is if they want to bring a beer or Scotch or whatever with their cigars, they could drink Scotch with their cigars until midnight and that's it, or whatever the deadline was.
Yeah. I don't have it all in front of me and I have to look and, and that's on the books. I mean, it, it hadn't taken effect yet because we're still within the 30 days, but there, there may be some need to allow for certain circumstances for nonprofit type organizations. We're going to, I'm in the process of looking at that a little further.
All right. So that might be tweaked a little bit in that respect.
Right.
But ba, but basically, as I recall from that Planning Commission meeting, they anticipated maybe 20 members.
Not more than 20. He said 16 right now, but not more than 20.
Right. And there was, there was a question about parking. There's adequate parking.
Yes, sir.
And it's, it's not a very big place. It's a man cave with cigars is what it amounts to.
Very, very small place, yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Peter, let's get this straight. There's nothing to do with nonprofits. That's a bunch of guys going drinking brown bag. And you had two tons of trouble already with these places that done this. So now we're going to sit there and approve another one? We just wrote laws to prevent all this stuff. We're going to try running around and allow brown bag. I mean, you know, so you create more problems.
What I, what I said was, from the perspective of a fraternal lodge, that's something we could still, still look at. Or Mardi Gras event at a city property that, that could be looked at. If it's, and, and some of this is fact by fact basis, are they really, is it like a private residence or a private home? Yeah, that's different. Is it a business at all? Is it just, I mean, is it a true social club where there are no, no members that could join? Not a club like they have in Utah where you, everything's illegal, which you pay $2 to join the club to drink in Utah in general, at least you used to. So I mean, as far as this specific circumstance, I mean, I'd have to see how it plays with the brown bag.
I just, I think we need to find out from you. If you could put this on the table before we can come back with some kind of answer for us. I mean, because you know, we just did this thing to help prevent something we get ready to pass again.
Well, as it currently stands, until the brown bag ordinance is tweaked, if they have their cigar and Scotch night, whatever it is, they, they can't serve after midnight. I think that's the way it is right now without looking at anything further.
This is on the side of claims and that. So this is on the side of just two regular businesses, not drinking and cutting up. So you setting, and then we're supposed to be protecting Kiesler, so now we're going to have him sitting there drinking in the front yard and all they want. So, you know, we either get this stuff straight one way or the other, or no passing of this thing. You know, we're going to know we're hollering and screaming, we don't have the police go down and check everybody in Judge Sequel.
So we have a first on the table to table it. Do we have a second?
I'll make that second.
No, I thought it didn't fail for lack of.
He asked for discussion before and so he's now seconding it.
I'll, I'll second that for the gentleman in ward.
Is there any more discussion before we call for the vote on tabling? And this would be subject to call for how long, George?
As soon as he can get back with it.
Okay. All right. We have a first and a second, all in favor of tabling. Raise your hands again, please. We have three, four, and all opposed. Four, so Mr. Lawrence, Ms. Newman, and Mr. Tisdale for tabling, my, Mr. Gaines, Mr. Deming, Mr. Glavine and myself opposed. So now I'll call for the vote for the original resolution as written, all in favor. Five, six, all opposed, one. Mr. Lawrence in opposition. All right. Well, now move to item F.
Resolution granting minor subdivision final pilot approval for property located at 13252 Hustley Road.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
It's just splitting a piece of property, correct? I have no further questions. Any other discussion? All in favor? Seven zero. Item G.
Resolution amending the charter boat rules and regulations and the rules and regulations for vessels in the Biloxi Commercial Docking Facility and Sherman Kane and Fishing Dock.
Have a motion? Have a second?
Second.
We have a first by Mr. Lawrence, second by Mr. Glavine.
The fact of what we're doing here, I know the last one that we had the first reading on, you was proving charter boats were charter boats getting chartered. What are you doing, uh, the, these are mostly fishing boats, the big slab, the big hundred. So what, what is the difference change here?
What we're changing is, it said, let me read it to you. To qualify for a charter boat rate, owners shall submit a valid business license, sales tax permit, and proof of at least six paid charter trips in the prior calendar year. Proof of commercial insurance is required by charter boat rules and regulations. What we're saying is there are boats in that harbor that are being charged the charter boat rate and they're not charter boats. So this is the litmus test for if you want a charter boat rate, you got to pass the litmus test. That, we just read the litmus test to you.
This is the Sherman Kane you're talking about. That would, the one you read earlier was for the commercial harbor. This is Sherman Kane. Do we have any in Sherman Kane that's charter boats or they all big fishing boat?
No, this, this is at Point Cadet Marina in the Small Craft Harbor. That's what, that's what this section deals with.
I know, but it said, it says on both of them. So different age. So you doing the same thing twice there?
I don't.
This is the one we just read the first reading. That's the way he, what he just read, that's where that came from. That's, that's, that's charter boats. That's different. Now you got another one down there, put regulations that. So are we dealing with two different harbors or are we dealing with the same thing?
Oh, G.
G is the regulations and rules.
G is the resolution for G and that's just to, rules and regulations that the, that the Port Commission has on the rentals, those rental agreements are generally approved by the council. So this is a resolution G, not to be confused with the ordinance for G.
And what are you doing? What are you confirming? One G.
All right. Let me back up.
Of course, he's confused. That's one, four C.
Do we have two four Gs?
No, there, no, there's, one of them's a four C, the other that we're on now is four G. Four C was ordinance to amend 10.5 Harbors Marina Waterways Article 2 birthing rates.
And mine says four G.
Yeah. Four G is the resolution amending the charter boat rules and regulations and the rules and regulations for vessels in the Biloxi Commercial Docking Facility, Sherman Kane and Fishing Dock.
Do we need to table it? Yeah, let's table it till we can.
Do we need to go back and read? But that was just a first.
No, I think it's, it might be a typo on the, which harbor applies.
We have a motion from George to table. We have a second. Second for Mr. Glavine. Any discussion? Yes, subject to call. Yeah. All in favor? Okay.
Just real quick while we're tabling it, I wanted to bring this to the attention of the administration and the council and, and maybe we can get resolved during the period of tabling it. Section 11 XI or X1, whatever it is, to qualify for a charter boat birthing rate, a vessel must be actively providing charter fishing trips and provide at least six paid charter trips over the prior calendar year. So are we excluding any new businesses? Would that not be an impossible burden to meet for a new charter? Can we put something in there to exclude?
For new, for existing, to qualify, yeah, we can.
For renewal?
That's a good point.
Thank you.
So we're still tabling, or, okay, so we have a first and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor? Seven zero. And that motion was by Mr. Lawrence and Mr. Glavine. We'll now move to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
I'll move it.
Second.
Okay. We have a first by Mr. Lawrence, a second by Mr. Tisdale. We'll start with Mr. Lawrence on discussion.
On B, on the 59,000, is that just for the carpet? For the library? Is that completed or?
It has not been completed. They're still working. What we did with this consent agenda, item by B, is it was clear that the laying of the new carpet was going to lapse into the new fiscal year. So what we did was we took the money that was in the library account in fiscal 23 and rolled it over to fiscal 24 so that there was, we had the funds to pay for it.
What you mean, the library account, the one that we passed?
The only thing that changes is we're paying the bill.
In this year.
In this year instead of last year.
But I mean, the money's coming from the 780 we give them or from where?
Your budget. Same amount of money.
They had, they had 59,000 left over last year?
FY 23. We rolled over to FY 24. And that's, that's so we can, you know, get that resolution.
But what we give 780 for this year?
9,000 we didn't spend in 23, we'll be spending in 24.
In, in fact, you're going to see in this, in this set of consent agendas, items, there's about four cases where there were vehicles that were not received and are re-rolled over. So that's just something that happens this year, this time of year with this crossover to the new fiscal year.
Okay. Okay, now what, the air conditioning on H? But that's the same kind of deal?
Which one?
H, the air conditioning.
Yeah, it should be.
And was that for the?
No, that job is finished. That, that is a resolution to authorize the lowest and best quote for replacement air conditioning at Point Cadet Marina. That's, that's the council, because this is, uh, that's the council approving that project. The thirty-five million, the thirty-five thousand dollar air conditioning, it's in the budget.
That's what a Hall of Mass House, where does that put the air conditioning?
It's at the point, it's the air conditioning for the Point Cadet Marina offices.
And it's, uh, down here on the, I think it's V. That's, uh, the, the Mardi Gras museum. I thought we passed that already. I thought we already approved that.
Is this B as in Bravo or?
B, yeah, Victor.
V as in Victor.
V as in Victor. Yeah, uh, you know, what's going on here on this is we, we've been paying the utility bill for the Mardi Gras museum as, as the council approved. It was based on an estimate and we're paying them more than the bill was. So we're taking some money back.
No, that's a good thing. Make that one down. That might be a first there.
So we'll just ba- basically adjust the, adjust the amount we're charging in the new year to balance out the overpayment.
And on that one, DD, you're taking this money out of the port trust fund and you're moving it to capital project ten twenty-four. So how much money you got from the trust fund?
Delta, delta. Okay, uh, councilman, notice the mention of the balance of the port trust fund. The port trust fund predates us having a port department. It goes back to when the, there was a port commission. And there was, our auditors helped us find that there was, when the port commission ended, that there was a small amount of money left in the port trust fund. And what we're doing is we've, that's found money and we're moving it into a project, which is the Point Cadet Marina improvements. And that wipes out that, that it was in the people's bank.
Okay, as a matter of fact, they have something left, they wouldn't, they wouldn't bust it, you know?
So how many years ago did the port commission go away? How many years ago did the port commission go away?
Probably twenty-five.
Yeah, well, that money's been sitting there all that time.
Yeah, I just said it would bust it, that's why they had any money. And, uh, on the Sanger, I know he's your favorite.
That's just him and cut, closing out the project.
Uh, FF? What is that on the Sanger? Are we getting money back? I doubt it.
No, we're, it, it's, that money is being transferred into another project.
Okay.
The very small amount of money, it's bond money. It's, uh, it's not the reimbursable money. It's, it's our money. So we move it into another, another project.
This is another one, HH. Is this something new we doing?
The court, HH?
Right, HH.
HH, yeah. Is the, the court programs, that's the, um, electronic monitoring. That's part of the, one of our efforts to-
We did that as a pilot, a test program. That's the, uh, allowing the judge to sentence people to home arrest with home monitoring. We did that on a short-term basis through, not a short-term rental, a short-term basis. But we did it for, uh, through the end of, uh, the fiscal year. And we looked at it and it's worked out pretty well, so we're going to extend that.
Okay.
It's in the police budget.
This is, uh, on, this is just a question on TT. With a big black box, what were y'all blacking out right there?
I, I, I'll have to defer to the mayor on that one.
Defer to Shane.
I haven't seen one like that, so.
In which that's what we can't say.
Yes, sir, this is our endpoint protection and we were trying to not publish the name of the product that we're going to purchase to the website as a way to kind of, you know, keep that information away from a would-be attacker. I mean, if you, if you would like to know the name and any information about it, I'll, I'll-
I just haven't seen that done like that all these years. You know, that was, so I just thought maybe it was pretty important, it was a pretty black day, you know what I mean?
CIA told us to do that.
While we're on TT, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Peter, um, Mike, while we're redacting this for security purposes, when we look at the resolution or the, um, the routine agenda, will this be reflected in the payments or this will also be redacted? I, and the, the question is, how do we maintain integrity of our public office if we don't even have the ability to follow up on who we're making payments to?
Well, you know, and this is a, you know, a subject to interpretation. This, this is- This is, this is purchased through CDWG. Um, so we would actually make the payment to CDWG. We don't actually pay this, um, piece of software directly. We're buying it through a vendor and it's on the state contract.
Okay, so we're paying a vendor of this product?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. And that would reflect on our routine?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Mr. Lawrence, you through?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Guines?
I think Mr. Lawrence got them all, so.
Ms. Newman? Mr. Demming? Mr. Tisdale?
Yeah, on item F, Mike, I just, I mentioned to you, uh, item F for Frank. I don't know whatever F is, what's F?
Foxtrot.
Foxtrot. Uh, just that fifth whereas in there, it has the ending date of September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two and-
Right.
I didn't know if that was a typo or not.
It, it is.
Okay.
It is, and we didn't pick that up.
Somebody will correct that. That'd be a Scrubner's error, I think. Okay, thank you. And then on item P, P. Pablo Pablo. Had to say that slowly. Uh, and I, I wasn't quite sure, I wasn't quite sure what was going on other than we're move, we're moving money. I, and one spot it was an expense, adding, reduce funding in the expense line by twenty thousand and increase the revenue by seventy-one thousand. And I know this is a, a number of different, I guess, funding sources and just the Reader's Digest version. I, cause my head was going to explode.
The Reader's Digest version, we're getting about fifty-one thousand dollars more.
Okay, I figured, okay, good enough, that's good enough for me. Thank you, Rachel. Um, let's see, then XX, the only comment I have on XX is that, um, it's noted in there that a wellness check incentive, which the insurance folks had talked about, we want to be sure that we got that in place. And it, and, and I guess the best thing to do is for the administration to set a window when the employees could, um, have their wellness check done. And, and then I'm thinking, whatever they do to verify that and get it to somebody so they can be paid for that, but, but also no payment can be an issue. Do they get this check?
Right, we need to pick a date in the future where they can start and then pick another date in the future that's not at the fiscal year end, so there's time to be paid out.
Exactly.
So something like January and July.
Right, well, and if, if we did something like that, then those folks who get their wellness checks annually, if they got it in November before the window, if they do it annually, we don't want them to be penalized. So just, you know, whatever that window is, we just don't want to be sure, we just want to be sure that no employee is penalized. The other thing is when they would receive payment, I would think you'd want to check with your, your finance department and see whether they want to run all the fifty-dollar checks at one time or how they want to do and, and when? At the end of the fiscal year, at the end of a particular month? But, um, I don't want, want this future resolution to get lost in the shuffle here. If you, maybe the next, last meeting in October, you would have that window designated in the form of a resolution, then we, we'll pass it and we'll be good to go. Is that okay? Somebody will make a note of that? Thank you. That's it, thank you.
Mr. Glavine? All right, and I have nothing that will, so I'll call for the question and then I'll get any exceptions, all in favor? Seven, zero. Any exceptions, Mr. Lawrence?
None.
Mr. Guines?
None.
Ms. Newman? Mr. Demming? Mr. Tisdale? Mr. Glavine? And I have none. We'll now move to the code enforcement hearings.
Item A on the agenda, JMM LLC, four seventeen Anglada Street. This property's still in violation.
Is there anyone here on, to speak on behalf or against JMM LLC, four seventeen Anglada Street? If not, this case is closed.
Item B, DNT Development LLC, Zero Pass Road, that case has been resolved. Item C, Donald M. Fresh Estate, two thousand eight Greater Avenue, that case has been resolved.
All right, thank you. We'll now move to the routine agenda. Do I have a motion?
Abode.
Second.
Have a first by Mr. Lawrence, second by Mr. Tisdale. Discussion?
Walter, bring us some checks.
Evening, council. Let's see, last Wednesday, we received nine hundred fifteen thousand from payment, uh, reimbursements and advancements. We currently have one point five seven million. That's in what they call step four or five. That's been in there for four days. So we should have that into the city accounts in the next ten to eleven days. And that should be followed by at least two point zero four million right after that.
And that keeps it up to date?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Ahead of date.
Thank you.
Sixty days ahead.
Say again?
Ahead of date, sixty days in advance, that's our goal.
That's even better.
Yeah.
Any other discussion?
Nope, thank you.
All right, call for the question, all in favor? All in favor? Seven, zero. Have a motion to adjourn?
To move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. First by Mr. Tisdale, second by Mr. Glavine, all in favor? Seven, zero. You are adjourned. Golly.